We call the city of Kewanee Common Council Meeting for March eleventh, twenty twenty four to order. Let the record show all members are present with the exception of Kathy Brown excused and Janita Zimmerman is on. Speakerphone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a normal silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right. Item three, approval of February twelfth, twenty twenty four, common council minutes. Does anybody have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item four, public comment communications, three minute time limit per person. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on her public comment this evening? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on her public comment this evening? There being no one, then we will close public comment. Item five, boards, commissions, committee and staff reports, personnel committee, plan commission, tug Luddington committee, finance committee, public works committee and staff reports.
Need permission.
Okay. Motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the staff reports, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Mayor's report, I don't have anything under mayor's report tonight, so we'll move on to item seven, unfinished business. Seven A, council interviews with Aldermanic District two candidates, consideration and selection of a replacement alderman. Keith, you wanna put some words around that, please?
Um, at the last month's meeting, council authorized posting vacancy for District two pursuant to resignation of Alder Shelton on January fifth. Submission of African interest was fixed with a deadline of last Friday with interviews and selection of the replacement alderman at this meeting, this one. Chosen alderman will then be sworn in, sign the required documentation and take a seat with the rest of the council effective immediately. Term of the seat expires April fourteen, twenty twenty five. As of last Thursday, when we put the packet out, we had one interest, one candidate with interest, Mr. Russ Anderson, who resides of what? Mr. Russell Anderson, who resides at eleven twenty-two Milwaukee Street, I have attached his materials. Into the packet for your information. Uh, Mr. Anderson here. You wanna come up to the?
Welcome.
This is for council to ask any questions, if you have any form.
I'm sure you wanna do this.
Trying to duck me out of it? Yes.
Just kidding.
I think you're ready to been in the city for about what, five years?
Five years.
Okay, where did you guys, you want to move in from?
Oregon, Wisconsin.
Oregon, the Panthers.
Yeah.
Jim, did you have a question?
I was just gonna move that we approve Russ Anderson as the new alderman, district number two. With the term expired on April fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Brewster moved to approve.
The candidate Russ Anderson, seconded by Janita. Is there any further discussion or questions or anything? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, we'll just, um, let's see, if you, yeah, you can take a seat and then when Joanne comes back, she'll give you the oath of office. And then you'll be able to assume your duties, uh, once that's completed. Meanwhile, um, well, I think I hear it coming, so we can probably do that right away.
Probably should wait, she's.
Yeah.
She's supposed to be in the meeting.
All right, so the council, uh. Brewster moved and Zimmerman seconded, uh, to approve the appointment. And it was unanimous, uh, vote, so if you want our minister of the oath.
Can you repeat after me? Aye, Russell Anderson.
Aye, Russell Anderson.
I've been appointed to the office.
Have you been appointed to the office?
Aldermanic District two.
Aldermanic District two.
And, okay, but I have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But yet, uh, yet not entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the States.
The Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties to said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, welcome aboard. Thank you, Joanne. Yes. Okay, uh, so after welcoming Russ, then we will move on to seven B, approved contract for, approved. Contract for court attorney services with Blaskovic, Blaskovic and Downey. Uh, that was in our packet and Heath, if you wanna.
Yeah, what we're, we're, we're seeking to finally approve is to reduce the cost of legal representation, staff requested council consider. An additional attorney that would cover cities legal representation, code costs involving primarily traffic and code. Violation citation referred to the county circuit court. Uh, this so-called city prosecutor, uh, is currently covered by the city attorney and the firm of Amundson Davis. Whose office in Green Bay provides the staff and council considers that the city attorney doesn't need to be involved with these kinds of citation related cases. And therefore, reached out to the firm, uh, Blaskovic, Blaskovic and Downey. Of Algoa provides the service to the city, they have provided the attached fee agreement for consideration with council. Um, this has been discussed previously and was requested that we get. Actual. We had an email from them, but I wanted something a little more firm than just an email, so that we could have something assigned. Uh, that's what we're doing here, is finding off on it, their approved rate is less than what, um, Amundson Davis would charge us on an hourly rate and it would also save us the. Trip mileage, so it would save us the whole way around.
All right, uh, thanks for that, Heath, so I would entertain a motion and we approve the fee agreement with Blaskovic, Blaskovic and Downey. Motion in a second, uh, any further discussion? Uh, please call a roll.
Conley.
Yes.
Was Dicky.
Yes.
Brown is absent, Blaha.
Yes.
Brewster.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to item eight, new business, eight A, update from KCEDC, Ben Nelson, president of KCEDC.
Apparently we had another miscommunication, cuz he's not here. I told him, we're scheduling you for the next meeting, apparently he didn't realize what.
All right, well, that was a brief briefing.
Yeah.
Then we'll move on to eight B, adopt a resolution approving amendment to the twenty twenty four budget to move forty-one thousand, five hundred, ten dollars and sixty cents. From the capital infrastructure plan fund to the general fund line item, one hundred dash zero, zero, dash five, two, one, one, zero, dash eight hundred, dash zero, zero, zero. PD capital outlay.
Yeah, actually, I'll revise that number down slightly, it's actually forty thousand, three hundred, thirty dollars and sixty cents.
Um, three thirty and sixty cents?
Yeah, forty thousand, three thirty. And that's because things altered slightly after the last meeting, we agreed to do this. Um, the watch guard body cameras had been reduced to a three-year grant, a three-year program. And we were gonna do the storage of the videos on site and then. Our IT help at the county then subsequently said, maybe we should do that on the cloud instead. So now we're going back to a different program, which means that they were able to get a same deal with a slightly lower price and a five-year program. So now the body cameras and the tasers are both on a five-year contract for service and support. Um, the training is gonna be with Algoa for the tasers, as I understand. And we're gonna be working with the county to try to put together the. Upload system so that we can. Actually do the uploads of the body camera videos. Um, I should note that in, in a final sort of post, um. I was talking with Officer Shadell last week and he talked about how he was going to an interview, put the body, had the camera on him. Plugged the go button to take the interview, did the whole interview, came back to plug it in and there was no video, it's gone, just. So, this type of system is supposed to. Should prevent that kind of thing in the future. Um, if they can't rely on their technology, what are we doing, so?
That's happened two other times in the last week where they turned it on, thought it was on and they're just, they're starting to malfunction.
So the only difference then from the prior conversation we had about the equipment is it's a reduced cost?
Because we went cloud-based and we changed some things and Ross is going to build the upload appliance. And it took a savings of, the base was like thirty-eight hundred dollars off of cloud. And there was an additional six hundred, I believe, tax down to that for Motorola to do it. Um, but they have shared that other small municipalities have done this to save some money. Where for about a thousand dollars, someone could build the upload client. And so that savings was considerable, rather than doing all three squads, we were doing the two squads. Because a school squad typically isn't used for patrol, it's just parked at the school, so we really don't need to invest that extra money.
You said Ross recommended the cloud, I mean, is that what the county is doing now with the sheriff's department or?
County did server and they already had some concerns with storage space getting filled up. And we do know that they shared with us two years ago that eventually they are only gonna have cloud based, you know, force everyone to go there, so. Ross said, rather than have a problem in three years, let's just do it now. And it just made sense, do the two cars, get back to five years instead of three and have the cloud storage, not have to worry about it.
So let me ask you this, what is the backup to that system, so when we're basing, uh, evidence, uh, physical evidence, interview evidence, those sort of things, we gotta hold on to, forget how many years, but. Quite a long time in some cases, especially if it's litigation continuing, what's our backup to the cloud, cuz we don't really have any control over that, right?
Everything that we have that we're sharing, for instance, will have the ability to share a link with the DA's office. So anything that we're prosecuting, a link is going to the DA and the DA will also have a copy.
That's through the third party, or that's through the county?
Correct.
Through the third party.
Through what, through Motorola, it is cloud, it is just cloud-based.
That's just the way it is, okay. Just getting nervous when a third party is involved and it seems like you don't have control over it.
And that's why some places don't wanna switch, but eventually it's just gonna be the way. How other things are with technology and, and change and people be nervous about that. The, the problem with keeping something here on site, where previously we were putting everything on a DVD, these videos are just too complex. And the, the data is just, there's too much and it will not fit on a DVD. So the days of having a copy, putting it on a DVD and it going back into evidence, that just doesn't exist anymore.
And then we're always behind on our equipment and can't afford the equipment, so. All right, um. If no one has anything else for Robin, I would entertain a motion to approve a resolution amending the twenty twenty four budget. To reallocate forty thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents from the CIP fund to the general fund PD capital outlay line item that, uh. One hundred dash zero, zero, fifty-two, one, ten, dash eight hundred, dash zero, zero, zero.
I move.
Wait, a second. And a second. Any further discussion? Uh, if not, please call a roll.
Conley.
Aye.
Was Dicky.
Aye.
Brown is absent, Blaha.
Yes.
Brewster.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carried. Eight D, authorize closure of, or I'm sorry. Oopsie, eight C, adopt a resolution approving a conditional use for healthcare facility at thirteen oh four First Street, Renee D Miller, applicant.
Yeah, the applicant, uh, is also doing businesses, e-Balance Massage and Wellness LLC, they currently operate off of Ellis Street. And they're requesting approval of a conditional use in order to use the existing office right next to the former, uh, the current county admin building for the former hospital. For this, uh. Massage and Wellness Facility, we're calling it a hospital-type facility for purposes of the R one district. Um, property located thirteen oh four, first street. Um. Property owners are one of the. They're now the property owner, yes. Perfect, now, okay, the current property owners were, were, were under lease to buy the property at the time of the public hearing, um. They are essentially going to lease it to their. Daughter. Daughter, thank you, um, for use as the facility and they're, you doing this as an expansion, they ran out of room in their current location, so this is an expansion of an existing business. Uh, property has sufficient off-street space, uh, off-street parking for, to accommodate the parking. And they will be operating, uh, Monday through Thursday. Uh, eight, eight, Monday through, Mondays, uh, yeah, sorry, Friday from eight to five and then some additional weekend appointments as needed. They're gonna have, uh, four employees up to, at this point, okay. Um, property is essentially, it's built, built to do this, so all we're doing is just requesting approval in order to put another, a similar type use in the same place. Um, plan commission recommended approval at their meeting on February twenty-second. And we, staff recommends approval of the resolution.
So I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution approving a conditionally use for healthcare facility for Renee D Miller. Doing business as e-Balance Massage and Wellness LLC, located at thirteen oh four First Street. Parcel number two forty-one dash zero, zero, three, two, zero, dash two, five, six, five, do I have a motion?
I move.
I'll second.
Second.
What, Janita in there on that? Uh, any further discussion?
Could I ask a question? Do you do trauma therapy at all?
We do a therapeutic massage and medical based massage therapy.
I was just gonna say, if you do that, uh, trauma type stuff or, I don't know if you're. Qualified through the VA, but you might wanna get with Nate Thomas, the county veteran service officer. And so you can get qualified through the VA, and then that way you can get patients that way.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you for that, appreciate it, best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, eight D, authorize closure of roads for Lake Shore Area Vintage Snowmobile Association. Eleventh Summer Show on the Shore on July thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Uh, yeah, this went through the Public Works Committee in last month, um. They're essentially requesting, uh. Various roads to be shut down, Harrison Street from Milwaukee to Main, Main Street from Harrison to point just south of Ellis Street and then Ellis Street from Milwaukee east to the White House Park. Uh, these are closures are for through traffic, so as all registrants will obviously need to come in or to register their vehicles and then locate them. Um. Other than the disruption of vehicular circulation, there appears to be minimal impact, um, so Public Works Committee recommended approval.
Me, this is the same as always, they understand to keep the post office clear and all that good stuff, so no change, okay. Does anybody have any questions concerning the road closure request?
We'll make a motion to.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Eight E, adopt a resolution opposing the sale of tax parcel thirty-one, two forty-one, GL eighteen, two dash four point one to the Wisconsin DNR.
Yeah, February sixth, the city received notification from the DNR regarding a, their proposed purchase of land from a private landowner for inclusion in the CD Bisadney. Uh, Buzz Bisadney Fish and Wildlife Area along Kewanee River, uh, DNR has several properties which I've shown in, uh, green. As well as the parcel proposed for purchase, which was outlined in red, um. As required by the budget bill authorizing this purchase, the DNR is required to provide notice, the city alerting us that. That the council may adopt a resolution either for or against this purchase. Uh, resolution is not required, nor is it binding on the actions of the DNR. So, um, I've actually framed the resolution as either support or oppose, but either way.
It, it really has no teeth.
It doesn't really do anything.
And I think the agenda is misleading too, it says authorize resolution opposing, I don't think that's the intention to oppose.
Yeah, and it, and the only reason why I did that was just to get it on here, I could have easily said adopt a resolution opposing or supporting, or you don't have to do anything. You can choose to do just nothing and then that's, that.
Yeah, it isn't gonna change their course of action, but I, I personally, after reviewing the. Request, it's not even a request, but I don't see what problem the city would have in, in that sale to the DNR, it's down there already. Contiguous with a lot of their current property and, uh.
The property is essentially, from a development standpoint, it's useless, it's our floodplain.
Government should be involved in that anyway. In a sale of private property to anybody, so.
Well, and again, we don't even have authority to decline it, so. I guess.
Sneaking it, the only impact to us is we lose twenty-nine ninety-six in, in taxes, we couldn't sitting.
Let's just say, for example, it was three thousand dollars in tax base, we're losing on, uh, hypothetical sale. We still don't have a say in the.
Yeah.
Transaction, so.
Yeah.
There's, there's really nothing that we're here to do other than, sure.
Yeah, you can either choose to do something or choose to do nothing, it doesn't really make any difference.
I was just wondering too, I was trying to look, that property is not really. Is, it's not really, um.
Developable.
Yeah.
Right.
It's like slop land, isn't it? That's what I kind of.
These are, even been a former DNR employee, they, they like these properties to protect the water quality and, um. Like you say, it's not developable.
Yeah.
And DNR pays taxes, so. It's not a big issue, I don't think.
Oh, yeah, three thousand dollar taxes, that's, again.
That, that was just a figure.
That's their valuation, that's not their tax, but, oh, yeah, that's a valuation of the land, so. Okay, so then I would entertain a motion, uh, to approve the sale. See, is that on, there isn't an motion or anything, I think we're worded, but I would entertain a motion to approve the sale transaction with the Wisconsin DNR of the tax parcel. Thirty-one, two forty-one, GL eighteen, two dash four point one.
Can we do that, Heath, can we make a motion to approve it even though the line item says make, adopt a resolution opposing?
I don't see why you couldn't, because the, the resolution could be written either way, so you can, you can choose to do that.
Okay. I'll, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Eight F, discuss potential change in city designated depository of financial assets. So this came up from finance. Um, I don't believe there was a recommendation from finance, was there Heath?
No.
There was not, there was a, a text from Kathy that she did recommend going forward with it, a sweep account through Nicolay Bank. Um, so I can share that much with you. Aside from that, uh, I guess I'll open it up to staff and council for discussion.
I'm gonna accuse myself in this specific one, Adam.
Okay.
I just have a couple of questions. Um, at the finance committee, uh, we were told that, uh, Luxembourg Bank had additional FDI insurance. To cover, I believe, the one point two million dollars that we have in our checking account. So I'm wondering how. Luxembourg Bank was able to obtain additional FDI insurance, because there's only two ways they can obtain that insurance, one is through a sweep account. And the other is through a collateral pledge agreement with the bank. Do we have a collateral pledge agreement with the bank?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I was hoping that that would have been brought out at the finance committee.
Well, the state. Assure, uh, insures us for an additional, so we're insured FDIC for two hundred and fifty thousand, the state. Insures us for an additional four hundred thousand. Or something of that sort, it's a, it's a, you know, it's up there. And so it's a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it's probably more than four hundred and, it's probably five hundred. And then beyond that, then we are collateralized.
Okay, but that was not brought out at the finance committee meeting, none of that was brought out at the finance committee meeting, I guess I asked a question. About the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for. The, uh, FDI insurance, and then I think I asked the question of something to the effect, I'm just paraphrasing here. Um, so then we have one point four million dollars in the bank. And then the other two point, the other one point two million dollars is not insured, and I think you said, yes, it was because the bank is insuring it, well. I mean, you didn't say that they had addition, that you did not say that they had the collateral pledge agreement. Now, that would make a difference if, if Nicolay Bank could also. Supplies with a collateral pledge agreement. Not only that, um, you know, it had come to our attention at the meeting, that Luxembourg Bank has now offered the city five percent. On that money. To me, that doesn't seem right, that all of a sudden Luxembourg Bank steps forward and says, I'm gonna give you guys five percent now. To me, that seems awful strange. That a bank would just arbitrarily call the city and say, I'm gonna pay you more interest. Never heard that. Never heard a bank do that before.
Well, you usually don't do these financial depository changes without an RFP either. Which we didn't do. So.
I would move that we table this until after the, uh. Reorganizational meeting, I, because I don't like the way this is going now. I don't like it.
Well, and I think what the administrator said is correct too, it should have been RFQ, RFP, put out, uh. As opposed to the way it.
All Nicolay Bank is asking for is a fair shot. And I think Nicolay Bank should have a fair shot and Luxembourg Bank should also have a fair shot at this.
I, I thought Nicolay was given, uh, both banks were given a shot, um, last fall and they both came and presented, am I long on that?
And so, if I'm understanding this correctly, Nicolay gave their best rate right away and then maybe Luxembourg now is trying to. Like catch up knowing what the competitor is.
Well, the five percent is also, the five percent on that money has been in effect for the last six months.
I was understanding.
I'm wondering why Luxembourg Bank didn't come back, didn't come to us six months ago and say, we'll give you five percent.
I, I was under the understanding that Nicolay had a higher rate of interest. Is that true or not?
Well, they had, yes, they have a, with a sweep account, it's a five point, you know, everything that sweeps into that, out of the checking into that sweep account is at five point three, five percent.
Has Luxembourg Bank approached us with a sweep account?
They, they did offer, yes, they met with me and they said that they could offer, they came in on last week, Monday. And they said that they can offer a sweep account as well, if we want that, otherwise they said.
Percent.
Otherwise, they said instead of doing the sweep account, cuz they said that that's a lot of, you know, whatever, you know, it's, it's a lot of work. Um, but then they said that they could just give us the five percent on the checking account. And then I, then I, I, instead of doing the sweep.
But they can do a sweep.
They can do a sweep if that's what you want, yes.
I think, I think this goes back to what John said and administrators said, I think we need to table this and it should go back to finance. To be revisited after the reorganizational. And it, it, it needs to get properly bid, it, it just did not rule out. Properly, in fairness to the both the banks, in my opinion.
I, I disagree with this because this, my understanding is the sweep account has been talked about for the last six to seven months. And it's always been, um, taken. There's something else going on here, so I feel this needs to be finished tonight because. I believe Jim Lebeck came to a meeting to discuss it and I believe, um, Bank of Luxembourg came to a meeting to discuss it. And at that time, Bank of Luxembourg did not offer a sweep account and never have till just now. So, there's more going on to this than we are all privy to. Um, I think it just needs to be taken care of and moved forward.
I'm, I'm gonna agree with Janita and I'm prepared to make a motion that, to move this, the city of Kewanee operation account. To Nicolay National Bank in the form of a sweep account with fraud protection tools added in the account.
You're making that motion at the same.
I'm making that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'm just, I, it. I still think it seems like we're playing one bank against another bank in an unfair way, that's just my opinion on the whole thing.
I, I disagree that it was unfair because like Janita said, they both had an opportunity to come in and have a discussion.
I know, but all of a sudden we come to a finance committee, we were told, well, now they'll give us five percent. Why'd you give us five percent six months ago? Why'd you give us five percent six months ago?
Exactly. That's why this just needs to be finished.
Heath, Heath, you were gonna say something.
It would have been. Procedurally. If this desire to explore depository options. Had started here. It didn't start here. I don't know where it started. It showed up on a finance committee meeting seven months ago. And that's when we first started talking about it. To my knowledge, there wasn't any discussion as a collective group of council. To decide that, A, maybe we should explore operate o- options for financial depository. Because that's a collective decision of council. And you're gonna make that tonight, apparently, but. It would have been better if it started here and then you worked your way through a process. Which was would have been truly transparent. Because then everybody would have had their one shot to say, okay, this is what we're looking for. Give us options if you have options for how to deal with transactions, how to give us better interest through this sort of thing. And then we get to the end, and then everybody has a chance to make. Their best case right up front. You get one shot at it rather than everybody constantly. Pinging back and forth to try and figure out who's gonna get the best option. And. That's the way it should have been done. And that's not the way this was done. And it. From my standpoint as your professional administrator, it. It makes me uncomfortable. That we got to this point. I'm just, I'll just tell you right up front. It makes me uncomfortable that we're in this position where we're. Dealing with this stuff because it's.
So it started at the finance committee, which is where it was supposed to start. Am I correct in that?
It should have been referred to the finance committee. It shouldn't have started at finance committee. Because under the standing committees, committees are only supposed to do what that which is referred to them. Which either comes from staff or council.
Which it did start there, but then we obviously had a briefing from the banks here, and they went through their proposals, and then it went back to finance, and it's kind of been. Floundering back and forth, like you said, pinging ever since. Robin, go ahead.
Okay, from what I understand, the head of finance committee was they both came in and gave a presentation. And it was kind of like at that time, we were, you know. We just said, well, let's go with uh Luxembourg Bank, and I was intrigued because I saw the sweep account, and I thought it was an interesting. Concept, and I thought it would be really good because it was a municipal account, and I had requested that we kind of look into that to get a better understanding for it. And that is kind of where it started pinging back and forth. Because we were trying to get an un- better understanding for that account. And then so um Jim had come to specifically explain the count to us. So we talked about that, and then where it finally ended up was Kathy said that her and Joanne were going to go and meet with Jim. To see if we could wrap up all these, you know, questions, because they were all questions, and it seemed like it wasn't appropriate. You know, and to make it. You know, to really get to the bottom of some of these things to make sure this was the account that we would consider. And that's where it was at, and then Kathy. Has had what happened to her. And she is unable to be here to explain it. So I really, that's why I was really hesitant to say anything at finance meeting, and I was. Happy that it was coming to council so that we could have an open discussion on it, and that's kind of where we're at right now.
So is this, is this something that is going to be in the best interest? Of the city of Kiwanee and the constituents that live here?
We're going outside. You can't, you have to remember, we're going outside of the process. Where a bank has now, after everything's presented, now another bank comes in and says, well, I'll give you five percent. We're going outside the process.
I mean, this is.
We're going outside. Now a bank calls the city? After everybody's done says, well, I'll give you five percent.
It wasn't even about the sweep accounts. The sweep account started after, and it was just information coming in, and it was just from one bank. The other bank was never included in it. Like he said, is it? It's out of the process. I mean, I don't agree with it, with this resolution. I don't.
Wasn't included. I guess I'm confused.
Bank of Luxembourg was never included with the sweep account and all the information coming in. Ever.
Yes.
No, they weren't, Janita.
Okay, okay. It just seems awful odd. That as everything has unfolded, all of a sudden now Bank of Luxembourg is coming in with this, and now. Bank of Luxembourg is coming in with that, you know. I just, I don't know.
Uh Janina, Joanne's got something she'd like to add here.
So, yeah, thanks, um. So, you know, we go to the bank and we drop off deposits. And I got asked what was going on if the bank, if you guys had made a decision, and I said, not as of yet. And they said, um I said, there's, you know, it's coming up on finance. They came in then the Monday before the finance meeting and sat down, or Lori Janowski came in and met with me. And um another lady by the name of Lisa something or other. And gave me all this information right here, which I brought to finance, and we discussed it. And then um one of the questions that came out of that was you guys wanted to know how long that interest rate was for. And so I emailed her and I asked her, and she said it's good for a year, but it'll probably go longer, but it's based off of the prime. So.
Which it has to be, yeah. They're not gonna guarantee indefinitely. Nobody is.
Right, but we did talk about collateralization at the meeting because it was all in these notes.
I agree with Joanne a hundred percent. That's probably what she did. And why wasn't Nicolay Bank offered the same thing? Now we can go to Nicolay Bank and say, I'll tell you what, Luxembourg Bank just called us and said they'll give us five percent. What are you guys gonna do for us? I mean, we can keep on going like this forever.
And that's why it's always preferred that you do it through an R F P. Where you say, we're proposing this, we want to do this or this. This is the type of system we have. What can you give us? And make them write it down, send it to us, and that's their one shot.
Exactly.
Recommending here too, um that, you know, we table this, send it back to finance, we can put together an R F P. Um in the meanwhile, they offered us five percent on our money. I would hope they give us a five percent starting immediately. So we're already five percent on that on that money. And then if we put this out in an R F P and it's all one and done, open them up at the finance committee. Then we know what we're dealing with. Uh Robin?
Well, we've been dealing since since August.
I understand that, but has it been procedurally correct?
Why wasn't an R F P, you know, suggested before this?
Because it didn't start with us. This stuff came out of nowhere. I remember it showed up on the finance committee's meeting for the first time in summer, and we had no. Neither of us had any idea this was happening.
Well, we didn't know, I don't know how they ended up coming to the meeting, that they both ended up coming to the meeting. I don't know who set that up.
And and we also have private citizens going to Luxembourg Bank and asking for city banking information, so I thought I'd have to bring that up. Because we have members of the community going to Bank of Luxembourg and asking for the city's accounting information.
Hopefully that wasn't released.
No, they can't. They can't because our our account's treated like everybody else's spread information. Want our information, bring us a warrant. Because you can't can't get it, but I mean. There's a lot of this stuff happening behind the scenes that we we aren't really privy to, except when somebody says, oh, hey, they stopped by to get your. Information, which is really screwball.
That I don't know anything about, but I do know that this has been being discussed continually, and if there's an R F P needed, then I, it would have been nice if. That would have been suggested or talked about. I mean, we've been talking about this. It's not like. This has been something we've been hiding or something. You've been at finance committee meetings, and we've been discussing this on and off, and. And it's like, instead of coming up and saying, well, you know, this isn't right procedure, it was like, no, Jim didn't say this, or. Oh, that's, there's a problem with this, and it was making it confusing. So it was always kind of like, well, why is this an issue? You know, so.
But you can't have banks going outside. Outside of the normal course of procedure. And calling up and miss the penalty and say, well, I'll give you the five percent. Explain how that's right.
I I I don't know. I'm just saying, you know.
That's a good point, too, because apparently Nicolay didn't do that.
My motion stands. I motion to table this until after the.
We made a suggestion, but we currently have a, could you repeat your motion, please, Eric? I moved to motion to move the city of Kiwanee operating account to Nicolay National Bank in the form of a sweep account with fraud protection tools added to the account. And we had a second, so we have a motion. And a second. Is there any further discussion? I know we've we've got differentiating opinions here in regards to what we can do. I think. The long and short of it is, if we if we opt to vote this down tonight and go back to what John was suggesting and tabling it to finance, I think we're still gonna get. Where we want to be. We're still gonna get to a point where we want the the best interest rate for the city. And whether that's a sweep account, whatever the it ends up looking like, I think we're still gonna get where we want to be. And that certainly has triggered us into a five percent in our current account status, so. Right now, we're better off than we were seven months ago. So. If there's no further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Conley.
No.
Was Dicky?
Aye.
Brown is absent. Blaha?
No.
Brewster's recruit recusing himself? Anderson?
No.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
We have a tie.
I think you need, I think you need.
Well, or I break the tie.
Yeah, that's right, you do.
I break the tie.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but. Joanne, this is for you. Do we need four votes to win, or do you need five?
Three quarters or uh.
I don't know.
So I'm not quite sure how this classification of a motion falls.
I.
I would be willing to bet it's more than majority. Stand by Gina.
I am.
Majority of all the members shall be necessary to a confirmation. In the case of a tie, the pair shall have capa cast casting vote. So you need, a majority of all the members shall be necessary to a confirmation. So if you. You may have a reduction, you may have somebody absent, but you still have to have five votes.
I see what you mean.
You you still have to have half plus one. So you still need five votes.
So a motion dies.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion died. Unsupported. Any further discussion? At that point, uh correct me if I'm. Not mistaken, Joanne, once it's done, if I recall, this came up in another one, you're saying we cannot have another vote?
No, I you can, yes.
Okay. Uh any further discussion? And if there isn't, I would entertain a different motion.
I'll make a motion to table this from after the reorganizational meeting.
I said it.
Send it back to finance.
Well, are you tabling it or are you?
Both.
Because if you're tabling it, you have to have a motion to untable it. If you're going to send it back down, if you're gonna make a motion to send it back down to finance, then that's what you need to do.
Okay, I'll make a motion to send it down to finance. Uh after the reorganizational meeting.
And we had a second by. Jeffrey.
You agree with that motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Conley?
Yes.
Was Dicky?
Yes.
Brown is absent. Blaha?
Yes.
Brewster? I mean, you're still here recusing. Um Anderson?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Heck, yes.
Uh I'm comfortable with that, so that, we don't need the, we're not.
You got the majority.
Yeah, so, all right, motion carries. Um well, I appreciate everyone's uh. Concern and attention to this matter. It it's very critical. We're talking a lot of money, but again, like I said. Since that seven months, we have now moved the bar at least on the interest rate, so we are. Successful in where we're at on the return on our investment or account currently right now, and that will give us the time to go back to work and. Procedurally get this correct, so. All right, so we'll move on to item eight G, approval of combination class B retail alcohol license for A B C hospitality. Doing business as vintage brick venue and events two O E Ellis Street, Allison Smith agent. That's the formerly the Blue Door, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve that class B accommodation alcohol license?
I have a question. Is she, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just, is she applying for, I mean, this is a regular liquor license, or can she apply for a banquet license?
She applied for the regular license. I in until I know what her capacity is for seating, we we could end up changing that. I mean, you know, when it when it comes to renewal time.
I think the next question's gonna be, what's her inventory on?
Well, we are tapped out.
Okay.
So.
That was my next question, because if she applies for a banquet license, that would free up a liquor license.
Correct. And that's, you know, depending on, you know, when she, you know, comes time for renewal, I would have that discussion because I I think she would know more so at that time. Because she's in the process of remodeling, so I'm not sure how many seating she's going to.
I'm just curious, what harm would it be if she was to do the banquet license upfront versus the standard?
She's gotta have the seating.
Okay.
That's the problem.
And she isn't sure where that's gonna come out in her remodel?
I don't even, yes, I, you know, we haven't.
She's pouring apart already a lot, right there already.
Well, right, so then, you know, I don't know what. She hasn't shared with me her business plan, so I don't know what her her plans are.
She had a permit too, right?
Building permit? Yes. All right, we have a motion and a second.
It's a commercial, so I don't, she wouldn't come to me for it. Or us.
Any further discussion? If not, uh all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Eight H financial reports, month ending January twenty twenty four. Any questions, concerns, additions, corrections? Motion approved? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item nine, are there any announcements? Any announcements from our valued guests in the audience tonight?
Yes.
Oh, no, no. All right, from Arizona, Councilperson Zimmerman, please report your announcement.
I just first want to thank the constituents in District Three for their support and trust. This last six years has been nothing short of an adventure. And everybody knows what I'm talking about. I feel the city is going in a positive direction. And I know that I haven't always. Fulfilled what I said I would do. I tried my best. But I still feel that um I was there for the. For the people of Kiwanee, and I want to wish Scott Updahl the best of luck. And I feel Scott, once voted in, will be an amazing um representative for our community. And I wish you all the best too going forward, so. Um you never know, I might be a louder voice out in the audience, so be prepared.
Oh, I would only expect as much from you, Janita, but.
But you only get three minutes.
That's only three minutes now, yeah. I would like to thank you uh for your many years of dedication to the city of Kiwanee as well, Janita, both in the uh. Uh elected side as well as uh all the public in the community. And it's been a pleasure working with you as well, so uh thank you for that, Janita.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements?
I'm a promotion to address.
Oh, right away. We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Uh we'll give it to with Nikki over here. Kind of draw. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good night, Janita. Don't forget your sunscreen in the first meeting.